Juan and welcome to West Orange High School for the West Orange Board of Education meeting. We are back in public session. We start the session. Mr. Jacoby, would you like to explain to the public a little bit about the change to the agenda, the first couple of pages, and what that is your reference to?
Absolutely. So, on the agenda, what we've done is I've provided a form for the district to use. It's the executive session resolution authorizing executive session. What it does is it enumerates the specific items set forth in the law that permit matters to be discussed in executive session, and it actually quotes the law. There's nine separate sections. And what we're recommending the board to do is that when they're going to be discussing a matter under one of the sections, that you'll see the checkbox is darkened, and then the specific matter or matters to be discussed are listed in there. And the executive session is confined to those items. And then, finally, it says if there's going to be, you know, coming out and reconvening and action may be taken, or not reconvening. Generally, the not reconvening is if you did this executive session at the end of a meeting, you'd let the public know that you're going to be going into executive and not taking action, so people don't have to sit around waiting to see if action's taken. So, since you guys did the executive session at the commencement of the meeting, generally, you're always going to be taking action following your executive session on a whole host of things, and maybe some of the items that you discuss in executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions on that from the board? Okay, seeing none. I need a motion to accept the closed public minutes from August 27, 2018.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Mr. Calvano, let's vote on that, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I'll abstain, I wasn't present.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
And President Charles?
Yes. Thank you. Before we go a little further, I want to introduce our student, two student representatives to the Board of Education. For the public who is not aware, earlier this year, we passed a policy to include two student representatives as part of the board. So, tonight, it's their first official night, so I want to ask them to introduce themselves, tell us a little bit about themselves. In the next meeting going forward, they're actually going to have prepare a report on behalf of the student body for us to be part of our meetings going forward. So, welcome aboard, ladies, and if you can just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, my name is Sisina Downey. I'm a 12th grader at West Orange High School, and I'm really involved in this school. I'm in swim team, in multiple honor societies, and many clubs. I'm vice president of science, and I'm secretary of our social studies honor society. And I volunteer at Kessler, and I like to be involved in the community, so I was looking forward to being part of the Board of Education as well.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Arushi Batnagar, and I'm also a senior at West Orange High School, and I am also a part of multiple extracurriculars at West Orange High School, so I'm part of multiple honor societies, and I'm vice president of French Honor Society, and also multiple clubs. I volunteer at Kessler, and I'm also a Mount Air mentor for the West Orange High School. And I like to be a part of multiple, like, I like to take part in the community, and I'm part of, I propose to be a part of student liaison to Mr. Moore in order to contribute to the district and to the student body, so I hope everything goes well.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board?
That's fantastic, we're glad to have you here.
Welcome aboard, good to have you.
Welcome, and I'd be, I would have been very surprised, Arushi, if you weren't here. Arushi was actually seeking this position for, what about, as soon as we announced it. But welcome, great to have you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, anything?
No.
Okay.
Welcome aboard, and looking forward to your input.
Thank you. Okay. Since Mr. Rutske is not present this evening, we're going to suspend the superintendent report except for the HIB. Any comments or questions from the board surrounding the HIB? Very small report.
Thank goodness.
Okay, yes.
Good way to start the year.
Okay. Next on the agenda are questions from the public on agenda items. These are comments or questions on agenda items only. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Calvano will work the clock, please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Barry Geltziler, 118 Old Indian Road. Mr. Jacoby, I see you expanded the agenda as you said earlier, but this should have done by law. What about all the years you have been here? Are you going to redo all those agendas so we can get access to what that was and what those minutes are? All right, and secondly, number 10, finance. Says that you recommend approval of the law firm CSG, Special Legal Counsel, for $10,000, does that mean there is more to be investigated? Or did they just overshoot their budget and you're allowing that to happen?
Anyone further on agenda items? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Let's talk about the access, Mr. Jacoby, Mr. Geltziler's question about access to the, can you talk a little bit about how the public will gain access to the records or the minutes for the meetings that have been in the past?
Many, many places. You guys always had a resolution to go to a closed session, and as you know, the, I've provided this to you guys as best practices. I'm generally not at your meetings, but this, I think, is more comprehensive. You did have resolutions, you did specify if you're discussing personnel. The law says that minutes, closed session minutes, you take open session minutes, and then you adopt them, and they're public. Closed session minutes become public when the matter is no longer subject to confidentiality. There are certain items that never become public. If you discuss a student matter, personnel matter, those don't become public. And so, if there's a request for, through Oprah, for certain closed session minutes of a specific meeting, those minutes will have to be reviewed by a records custodians and appropriately redacted before they're released.
Okay, thank you. Any comment on the board on that particular question? Okay. Mr. Calvano, can you speak a little bit to the item on the agenda regarding the increase in the fee?
I think maybe...
Okay. Mr. Robertson, then, please.
Yes. We required additional services from CSG that are related to and in follow-up to the investigation as a special, and their role as a special counsel.
Next item on the agenda is personnel. I need a motion to move section A, personnel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I want to congratulate Mike Zarro on his retirement. We're going to miss him. He's done a fantastic job in the...
Yeah, Mike Zarro worked very hard, did a lot of great work for us.
Residency office. And I want to congratulate Nick Munoz on his promotion. He's done a great job for us as the custodian at Gregory. He was usually there at night for our PTA meetings, and it's great to see him moving up, going to be the supervisor at Washington. That's fantastic. Congratulations.
Ms. Mordecai, anything?
No.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, anything?
Good.
Mr. Robertson?
No, thanks.
My only comment is I'm glad to see that the launch agent will be receiving some specialized training now. Gregory is being approved tonight, and moving forward, the superintendent, assistant superintendent has informed me that all the schools will have the training as well, which I think is well-needed and welcomed. Mr. Calvano, let's vote, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yeah.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Need a motion to move section B, curriculum and instruction.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Calvano, let's vote, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Need a motion to move section C, finance. Motion?
President Charles, I would like to carve out item number 10 on page 11, and I'd like to table that until we have the sufficient backup for that item, specifically scope agreement.
That is item 10, page 11?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Mr. Calvano, let's vote on...
Table in number 10.
Yes, let's vote on that first.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Tabled.
One, just one question.
Sure, go ahead.
On attachment, yes, one second. Attachment nine on page four. So, it says that the estimated state was, the budget is $13 million, and the actual is approximately $9 million for a variance of $4.6 million. I thought that the actual increase by the $4.5 million.
Let me look into that, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board on any other items under finance? Okay, Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
So, this is everything but number 10?
Everything but, yes.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Actually, do we have a motion to move it and second it?
With it.
Yeah, with it.
Yeah, there's a motion to move and second it.
You've been to move the remaining items.
Oh, to move the remaining, okay. Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Section D, reports from the HIB. Motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Robertson. Any discussion from the board?
Yeah, thank you.
Seeing none, Mr. Calvano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is reports from board members. Mr., I'm going to start on my right this time, Mr. Schwartzbaum, anything?
I'm good.
Good. Mr. Alper?
I am also good.
Okay. Ms. Mordecai, anything?
Sure, I have a couple. I leave the football for you guys. Okay. Last Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending the Hazel Carnival, and it was wonderful. The weather was great, and I believe it's the first year they had a train, so it was really, really nice, and the kids really enjoyed it. There's a lot of face painting and everything. On Saturday, October 6, 2018, the West Orange High School Marching Band will host its sixth annual West Orange Marching Band Invitational. Look forward to seeing all of you there, and the board placed an ad in the program journal, so we try to support where we can, as pretty much everybody should know that this is the volunteer board, but we do try to support whenever we have a chance to. So, we did place an ad in the Mount Air Football Program, and we also placed an ad for the marching band. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Essex County School Boards Association. I know tomorrow is back-to-school night, so my colleagues, of course, can't make it, but tomorrow will be, I'm the only one on the slate for reelection tomorrow, so looking forward, hopefully, you know, with everyone's support, to be re-elected as president of the Essex County School Board Association. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mordecai, Mr. Robertson, anything?
A couple of things. One, I want to congratulate soccer coach Doug Nevins for hitting his 300th win, and actually now 301, 301 career wins. Big milestone and just indicative of the great work and level of excellence that he's brought to our program over the years. Two, I just want to say how much fun it was not only watching our team have a commanding win at our homecoming, but it was, for me, it was just very touching, and I think for Ms. Mordecai too, you know, being a part of our homecoming and runner-up kings and queens, because known most of these kids, many of them since kindergarten, and watched them grow up with my son, and some since sixth grade, like Gabby, and it was just, it was a wonderful experience, and congratulations to Prince, our king, as well as to Morgan, our queen, and all the runner-ups. It's wonderful to be a part of that. Also, I received a very in-depth note from a parent, and I promised her that I would mention this. It's a topic that's come up a lot, and that is sleep. The idea that our schools should consider opening later so that our students can get more sleep. And there's a wealth of research on the impact on awareness, impact on physical health, and this came from Ms. Wenger Jones, and her husband, Dr. Jones, is a pediatrician. They actually sent a in-depth article from the Journal of Infectious, Child Infectious Diseases, and it really vividly impacts not only the role of sleep and the role of later school hours, but they included in there a case study for the Seattle school system. Given that, it's been about a decade since we've visited this issue, and originally, the board, as I understand, previous boards ruled in favor of our current hours. It was based upon parent feedback that there, the older kids needed to pick up the younger kids. And I know of several families where that happens now, where whether it's a high school are going to pick up a younger sibling, or a middle school are going to pick up a younger sibling, that that was one of the reasons for the early hours, as well as, of course, the staggered times. I think that we're at a point now, given the amount of research, amount of feedback we've gotten from parents, that we really need to revisit this. So, I don't know if we can get on the agenda for discussion for the next board meeting, but I think that we need to take action to formulate some sort of survey and maybe feedback groups in conjunction with PTAs to find out what the needs are today, and what the opportunities are, and understanding that, you know, changes in schedules could impact both academics and sports. Still, the health and performance of our students are right at the top in terms of the priorities, and we need to revisit this. What, do our students agree with that? I think our student representatives agree with that. You'd like to get some more sleep, too, wouldn't you? Yeah.
Um, please. Well, sorry. Especially with more rigorous classes for, like, I've been upperclassman, and with APs, it's hard to balance all of that coursework and then also get enough sleep to concentrate and focus in class the next day. So, even like half an hour, an hour of sleep more to, like, kind of later school timing would, I think, benefit the entire school, student body.
Excellent. And see, this is why we're so happy, having you here. You're right here to give a Senate. Sorry.
I think that's a policy decision, and I think the policy committee, which happens to be Mr. Robertson and Ms. Mordecai, should actually take a look at that and, you know, plan the survey, discuss with the student body, speak to the assistant superintendent and superintendent, and I think we can, you know, possibly move forward with that in the coming weeks.
If I may add, I think it's a great idea to explore, but just want to remind you that a few boards ago, we moved the time by 10 minutes to save $600,000 in transportation costs. So, whenever we explore it, we should also take a look at the monetary value and the transportation. We had a hard time this year with transportation, because, I don't know if everyone knows this, but nationally, a lot of school districts are struggling to find bus drivers. So, it's been a tough year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mordecai.
You're welcome.
Mr. Robertson, anything else?
On that topic, one of the things I think we have to look into, I, first of all, I think it's a great idea. Little kids get up early, high school kids get up much later. But one of the things we have to look into is that it's not only West Orange, but we also compete in various sports activities with other school districts, and how does that impact games and everything else? So, it's more than just a West Orange issue. We really have to look at other school districts and seeing how that impacts and, you know, whether it impacts only the lower schools, the high schools, so on and so forth. It's, I think it's a very comprehensive thing that needs to get done, and I think it's worthwhile. I know Mr. Epstein, I believe he has been a big advocate of it over the last several years.
Yes. Ron?
Yes.
I'd say, you know, I think we should definitely look into it, you know, I think it's hard to quibble with the science on it. The biggest concern for me, that I don't think anyone's mentioned yet, is, you know, if somebody, if some kids in the district have to be either walking to the bus stop or walking to school when it's still dark in the winter, I don't want that to be elementary school kids. And I think that might end up being the biggest challenge. I think sports is a big, it seems like a big issue, but with the science out there, if you can overcome the little kid issue, it sort of solves itself, because you get the whole conference to switch at the same time if there's enough demand for it. So, I think that actually fixes itself. And of course, the other thing, like Mark said, is, you know, a lot of people have high school and middle school kids, whether it's paid babysitters or older siblings picking up the younger ones from school, so inverting that relationship, you know, it's definitely worth considering. We need to talk to a lot of people.
There's a lot of moving people.
Exactly. Yeah. But it's definitely, we should be looking at it.
Can you get further, Mr. Robertson?
Yes. Also heard from some parents on an issue regarding our gifted and talented program, and it's one that's come up before, and that was a concern about, and it's part of a larger concern, about how much we test, and are we over-testing. In this particular case, a child was tested out of the gifted and talented program after being in there for a couple of years. Now, I don't know, a couple of things. On one hand, we did, there was extensive work done to revamp the program to try to meet what are best practices standards and greater fairness, and making sure that we were addressing racial and ethnic diversity, because there have been more complaints than we can enumerate in one night about complaints about discriminatory practices that we all had to address. It was a wealth of things to address, and Ms. Dominguez, I think, you and, you know, team did a wonderful job. As part of that practice, as part of that developing the standards, we did have open parent meetings, we did have about a dozen parents that were on the committee, and then there were at least four board presentations and discussions leading up to that, that was taking in parent feedback, as well as looking from a curriculum standpoint of what the best practices are. However, I think that this is something we still need to revisit. One, because if a child is gifted and talented, I don't believe that a child, I don't think there's evidence that a child, all of a sudden, unless there's been something catastrophic, goes from being gifted and talented to not gifted and talented. Children deal with stress, children deal with anxiety, children have life events, just like adults, things that can impact how they test. And I think that we need to make sure, one, that we're looking at the balance of how the child is performing from the standpoint of grades versus having to test to remain in a program annually. That's something that we eliminated in honors for kids who had a B or better. There's no testing to stay in honors. So, I think we need to look at how much we're testing, number one. Two, the kind of stress and impact it has on the child. If a child has already demonstrated that she or he is gifted and talented, you know, what evidence is there that all of a sudden they aren't? Could they just be going through a difficult time? And is this, in fact, penalizing them? And three, well, you know, just in general, too much testing, fairness to the child, and supporting that child in the development of the areas where they're gifted and talented. And then, last, as we're looking at the testing, that becomes part of a larger issue that also then relates to honors. We made some improvements in honors in terms of kids who have a B don't have to test to stay in it. A B is considered a good grade in an honors course, in middle school honors. At the same time, we have the test weighted so heavily versus the child's work in grades. So, you know, it's not on the agenda this evening, but these are things from a curriculum standpoint that I think we desperately need to revisit, and making sure that we're putting a sufficient emphasis on grades, because it's grades that kids and parents are judging a child's performance on on a daily basis. And if we feel that there's an issue with the grades, then we need to deal with grading rubrics, which we have now at the high school, an excellent, very clear grading rubric, but we lack for K to 8 to this day. So, I don't want to punish the child for failing to address what we should be addressing in terms of curriculum and instruction, and providing a fair rubric so that the grades can be weighted appropriately. So, just want to revisit that at some point. I'm not sure what agenda that would be on, but I just wanted, Mr. President, kind of put it back top of mind, that these are recurring issues that are having an effect on that kid's self-esteem, kid's performance, as well as on the parents. That's it for me.
Thank you. I have nothing, I just want to extend my congratulations again to the homecoming king and queen in court, and to Coach Nevins on his historic, historic win. And actually, for the band, too, I think the band came in first place in a recent competition, so, you know, the band just keeps on winning, so to speak, so that's, you know...
The band plays on.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Robertson, Mr. Charles, do we have football on Friday?
We have football on Friday, yes. It is against Livingston. Against Livingston, yes.
Is it the senior game?
We were pink, right?
It's pink, it's pink hockey.
It's a pink hockey game.
Pink night.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is petitions and hearings from the citizens on open items. Please come up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak. State your name and address for the record, and please adhere to the three-minute time limit. Mr. Calvano on the clock.
Hi, Rachel Gordon, 8 Maker Street. There was a report issued about the Legionnaires', and there's a lot of concern from parents who are very, because as far as I know, in both my son's schools, which are the affect, some of the affected schools, they're still using water fountains, so we want to know, like, so what's happening? Should we be telling our kids not to use the water fountains? It's like a little, there's not as much information as I feel like there should be, so we'd be really interested in how we can do that. There's also, I want to reiterate, I think looking into later start times is a great idea. You know, there are a lot of complications, but I think looking into it and forming a committee is a great idea. And also, there had been a lot of talk as well about lack of communication for the gifted and talented, and like, why it's changing, and I know that there was, because I was at some of the informational meetings, but it's, and that's fine, but it was sort of like how it was rolled out was very late, and what the appeal process was, and why some kids weren't going out, so it was very confusing. But more importantly, the, because I know a lot of people watch this on live stream or on the, and I know that people are very concerned about the whole Legionnaires' thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Michaela Bennett, 35 Old Indian Road. I have three things, I think, that I'd like to ask about. The first, the question that Mr. Geltziler asked but wasn't answered, which was, why does it take the public raising the concern about you not comporting with the law to get you to comport with what is required by law? That's number one. Number two, regarding water. I was going to say this, whether or not the Legionnaires' bacteria report came out, so it's actually very timely. Our son was permitted to carry his water bottle from place to place, from the time in which he started at the St. Cloud School until the time in which he left. in which he started at the St. Cloud School until the time in which he left. And then when he started at Edison, he was not permitted to carry his water from place to place. For a few reasons, he needs to carry his water from place to place. I think it is silly to require a doctor's note when every teacher at back-to-school night had their water bottle on their desk and the principal had his water cooler in the corner, yet our students are not permitted to carry their water bottles from class to class. It's just silly. And in light of what's going on, although I'm not sure that the water that he brings from home is any healthier than the water that's at school right now, I think it's important that children hydrate. Brain functions better when they're hydrated. Their bodies function better when they're hydrated. And it's silly to instill this into elementary school students and then break that habit. And then the third issue that I'd like to raise is that you should welcome conversations with the public. You should welcome sharing information with the public, and you should recognize your responsibility to do so. And it shouldn't take Herculean effort from the public to force you and compel you to bring information to the public that we have the right to know. Every bit of information that was investigated by CSG is public information. And so their report should be public information. There's nothing more important to the public than having trust and faith in the people who lead and steward their children's education. And so I would encourage you to reconsider because I, you know, I think I've been a person of my word. I'm going to take this absolutely to a place where a neutral person will make a determination that is in accord with the law. Thank you.
Hello. Tom Volsho, 40 Overlook Avenue. I just wanted to discuss a little bit about Oprah and following the law with regard to Oprah. So I have a, I Oprah'd some information, and it's now in mediation, and I believe you discussed it in your close session earlier tonight. One of my concerns is whether or not the superintendent was influencing the Oprah releases. And I want to make sure, I want, I would like some clarification on whether or not the superintendent has the authority to go over the head of the Oprah custodian. I'd also like to know what's the law on sharing my Oprah requests with other people? Because I feel like every time I make an Oprah request, certain people hear about it that shouldn't. I don't know how that happens. And so I'd really like some clarification on that. Does, is the superintendent allowed to override Mr. Calavano's authority on Oprah requests? What happens to the information about my Oprah requests once they're submitted? Do they, are they disseminated to certain people? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, yes.
My name is Tisha McKenzie, and I reside at 10 Hepworth Place. I want to talk about the Legionella bacteria. I'm really concerned that the information pertaining to when the test took place, even remediation, I feel like this board has not been as forthcoming or provided enough information to parents regarding this. My son attends Edison Middle School, and I'm extremely concerned that considering all of the information that we had prior to, that, you know, I get robo calls regarding spiritware, but no one bothered to send a note home and/or to provide me with a robo call regarding the findings for this particular location. You know, compelling interest, compelling public interest. The interests of our children, their health is very, very important. And while there are specific means and methods in which you can contract Legionella bacteria, you know, the fact of the matter is, you know, kids are always throwing water on their face, the fact that they weren't allowed to have water bottles with them. My child has been exposed, and it's something that could have been avoided had you guys communicated with us or found a way to communicate at large transparently. Further, I have not received any information as to what is the process and or procedure that you're using now that this information has come out to ensure that, one, all of the water fountains have been turned off, two, that water that is tree and clear bottled is being provided to children. None of that came out with this item that was left on the school website that perhaps some parents don't even know about at this point.
Good evening. Cynthia Cumming, 58 Valley Way. I just want to make an announcement that October is, has been proclaimed Anti-Bullying Month in West Orange. We had a proclamation read at the town council meeting last night, and the school district and the township will be joining forces to share some posts. The Human Relations Commission is planning some events and activities. And I feel, you know, for myself, I feel that this is an important thing. It's for, you know, not just for the children. Yes, it's for the children because it's been eight years since the original Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights came out, and then it was amended in 2012. But also because, you know, sometimes we have a political climate where people are not always nice to each other. And, and I'm not just talking about children, I'm talking about adults as well. And, and my belief is that with one of the most diverse populations in the state of New Jersey, West Orange should be a leader in the respect, tolerance, and acceptance of others, whether in person, in school, at work, or online. And so I just want to encourage everyone, Monday, October 1st, we are all going to wear blue, the town, the township, the township employees. We're going to encourage staff in the schools, the students, the parents, everybody to wear blue to kick off Anti-Bullying Month. And then as the month goes on, we'll be sharing some more things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Susan Duarte, 14 Coing Place. I would like to know if someone can offer some reasonable explanation for high school students being picked up at 6:35, 6:40 in the morning, arriving at the school before seven o'clock, and sitting on a bus over here in the parking lot for 15 minutes. The explanation of there's no supervision at the high school because all the teachers aren't there is ridiculous. They're sitting on a bus with a bus driver. They're unsupervised. Has anyone looked at the bus routes to see when they arrive? Did any, has anyone checked out amending them? It just, it seems like a waste of the kids' times, what Mr. Robertson was saying about extra sleep. There you go. There's an extra 20 minutes. So if someone could look into this, I've emailed the director of transportation. She sent me back an email about a bus that isn't even where, that my kid is on. So, you know, I, I kind of, I'm throwing my heads up, punting to you guys because it just seems ridiculous at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. My daughter goes to Redwood. She's in the second grade, and her and her friends started school back in September, at the beginning of this month. At the August meeting that we had here, I requested and I asked you guys if there was going to be testing done at the school, and you guys said yes, and that it was supposed to be done the week we came back. We never received any results. The information that was provided on the website today, unless you know anything about how to read those results, you just provided the public with zero. That's the best that we can do when we have someone that we hire in our district to, I guess, relay information to the community, something that's extremely concerning to everybody. Again, parents here are telling you the same thing that I'm telling you. If you don't actively go looking for it, you don't find it. The reason why I found out about it, which is funny, it's like there was a post on Facebook that popped up about it. It wasn't even from a school official. It was from the West Orange Council of PTAs. That's where the information came from. If you're not part of the group, you're, you don't hear about that. Was there testing done at Redwood? I don't know. The lack of communication that continues to come from this body is concerning. The lack of clear communication that continues to be brought from the schools as well because they don't have the right information as well is extremely concerning. I did call the school. The secretary was very nice. She said, yes, we had testing done. It's supposed to be done again. I don't know when. So it's in the best interest for all of us because we have our kids there. It's in my best interest to have this information made available. One, that is clear and understanding for someone that has absolutely no idea of what pounds per square inch is when it comes to whatever or however the bacteria is being passed around. Two, you know, it affects, or it will affect a lot of children now. The flu season is coming around, and it's going to make their immune system a lot, a lot weaker. So if we can get on top of this some way, somehow, maybe tomorrow, if you guys can send something out to everybody, that would be great. If we could change the information that's on the website as well to make it more understandable for someone that's, you know, ignorant, for lack of a better term, like myself, that doesn't understand how to do those tests, that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Cheryl Merklinger, 10 Sheridan Avenue. I apologize, I just came from chair of practice, so I'm a little bit late. So I just wanted to commend Ebony Dominguez from last night. She gave a presentation at the Council of PTAs about the ELL program and the gifted and talented program, and it was really eye-opening, and it gave a lot more information than I think some people are aware of. So I would just recommend if we could have Ebony maybe speak at another board meeting to talk about those two programs, I think would be helpful. There was not a lot of parents at the meeting, so I'm not sure that everyone really is aware of the information there. I do want to give a small plug. Our West Orange PAL cheerleaders will be performing at City Field this Saturday. If everyone's not aware, it's a sold-out game because David Wright announced his retirement. So our girls were fortunate enough to have to cheer this weekend there. And the other question I had was from some parents have been asking about the bubble. I know that there is a project plan being put in place, and so we're just wondering about an update, if we could get one about where we are with the bubble.
Thank you. Anyone further? Seeing no one, we'll close that section of the agenda. The board has asked the Buildings and Grounds Director, Mr. Siggi, to come tonight and give an update on the water and the Legionella issue in the district. So we can ask Mr. Siggi, come up to the microphone, please, and update the public on what the district has done, with the procedures, the school, the results, and all things Legionella here in West Orange.
All things Legionella. The district found out in the summertime that there was a potential case of Legionnaires' disease in the township. That first came from the township in my last report, and it was found at this point that that person did not have Legionnaires' disease, nor did he get it in the town. But the township, township took a proactive approach and did things in their buildings to clear any Legionella bacteria that might be there. We then got a report that there was a student at Redwood that may have come down with the Legionella bacteria also. That proved also to be false. But when the superintendent found out about it, he took the proactive approach of saying, let's get our water tested in the building and seeing if there was anything that came out of it. Well, it did. We did find Legionella bacteria in the water. It was not transmittable through the misting, which normally is the case for the Legionella disease to occur, which is more of a flu-type of symptom that can be treated with antibiotics. The superintendent made the decision at that point, let's correct and do what we needed to do. Again, that was all precautionary. It wasn't mandatory to do that, and we started to do filtering and cleaning of the school. We ended up doing what they call a chlorination process, which I explained last time, which is cleaning out the entire water system on the hot water side because that's where the culprit is. It's not on the cold water side. And the good news is that that chlorination process did work because this afternoon I got the final results from Redwood, and we are now clear of the bacteria at Redwood School. That process now is occurring in all of our schools, the ones that we found the Legionella bacteria. Those reports came out about three or four weeks ago. We've been working to get the buildings chlorinated as quickly as possible, and it's just a process that is critical with certain companies out there. We've only found one, Omega Environmental, that's doing the work for us now. Their resources, they're putting more people on to get this completed as quickly as possible. So we're working from the front end and as well as the back end, meaning the back end, the larger schools, it'd take a lot more time to do the chlorination. We're putting filters on and cleaning, so we've done that the last couple of days at the high school, Edison School, and Roosevelt. The elementaries are smaller in the way of fixtures that need to be treated, and those are being done on the weekends because the school has to be shut down completely, as I explained with the process the last time, that the chlorine has to sit in the hot water tank. It is then pumped through the system. It sits in the system 14 hours, and then it has to be evacuated. The system is retested by the company Omega, and then a follow-up four days later by Garden State Environmental. And we do that so that we don't have the fox in the chicken coop, so to speak, that the testing company is saying that there's, or the treatment company is saying that everything is okay. So we have an outside, independent company come in and do the testing. So I was a little skeptical of the process and saying, will the chlorination work? But I'm happy to say that the chlorination does work, and we are good with that one. So we've done two other schools, Malpleasant and St. Cloud. We now plan to do Gregory this weekend, and the process is going to take place every weekend and in the holidays that we have leading up to it with the plan of November 9th, I believe, to have everything completed. So that's the good news. So again, it's all precautionary. It's something that the superintendent made the decision to do. We're not mandated to do it. We probably had the bacteria in our schools for the last 30 years. It just surfaced now because we had a report. Good thing that it was unfounded, but again, we're moving forward as quickly as possible to get this done. We reached out to other companies in the state, and there's very few that do it. So everything is being channeled through Omega Environmental, and they're the ones that are going to try to even subcontract some of that work out to get it done sooner than later.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board on, just on this matter?
Yeah. Bob, if you could just confirm, I'd spoken with Mike Funzino from the Town Health Department today about the whole concept and the transmission, and I just want to confirm that, you know, you've heard the same things and that this is right, that first, you need to be susceptible in order to get it. You have to have a compromised immune system. It's not something that ordinarily healthy people are...
That is correct. That is correct. We don't drink the hot water. The cold water is fine.
Right. And it's not transmittable through drinking water.
That's correct.
It has to be aerosolized.
That's correct.
It needs to be a mist.
The mist is really where Legionella disease came from.
Mostly cooling towers, which we don't have in our air conditioning systems.
We have one, and that's at the high school, and that's been treated and tested.
That was already done. Okay. That's good to know. And also showers, which no one's using.
Yes.
And decorative fountains, which I don't think we have. Someone showering?
We used our showers, and again, we had, I think, one hit in one school, I forget which one it was, that we had a shower. So our process in the future, not only are we going to do flushing three times a year, but we're also going to change out the showerheads once a year, okay? And change over to the ones that are permanently on the wall and put removable ones on so we can do that. It's a, it's a small cost, but it's a, it's a benefit to, to do that.
That makes sense. My understanding is, what I was told was that no one at the high school showering wrestling showers, but that hasn't started yet. That's a winter sport.
Well, we make the showers available for anybody that wants to. After a phys ed class, after any sports activity, showers are working, and if they're not, we certainly get them working. So there are quite a few numbers in both the boys' and the girl locker rooms. So if there's one that's not working, they still have enough to do that. So we always make that available.
So if they're available, they've been tested?
That's correct.
And they're okay? They've already been tested?
Well, we got, like I said, one hit on one shower in one of the schools, and that'll be part of the hot water system. So cold water was fine. The hot water system is the part that's going to be chlorinated, and once that's done, retest it, and it's proven that that system, where that type of treatment does work.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Albert?
That's all I've got.
Ms. Morikai, anything?
Yes. Mr. Calavano, I know we notified...
Mr. Calavano, I know we notified parents, did the letters go out in the mail?
No.
Okay, the, we had, we had, we had Mr. Siggi come at the last meeting and do a presentation. I know at that point we did a letter, and I know we have another letter that was supposed to go out yesterday or today.
I believe there's a letter posted on our website.
Okay, the letter should be going out...
I'll talk to them.
The letter should be going out in the mail in English and Spanish. Please.
Okay.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, anything?
Just a quick question, so you talked about the Legionnaires' disease resides in the hot water systems, and from the conversations, it seems that there's limited use of the hot water systems, especially now, given that we still have warm weather. So do we have the opportunity to perhaps do the chlorination process during the, during school rather than just on weekends, and just not having anyone use hot water?
It's a two-day process where it has to be shut down, so we use hot water in the kitchens for the food service, so that would hamper us. I mean, washing hands, people want to use the hot water when they do go to the restroom. So it's a prep day on the first day, getting that hot water tank to be filled with chlorine and sit for four hours, then it's pushed through the system and has to sit for 14. So that's a 24-hour period where you really can't do anything, and then it's cleared out and put back in use. So that's why we're doing it on a Friday afternoon and Saturday.
Right, right. So outside of the kitchens?
Yes, yes, outside the kitchens, yeah, yeah. If push can be shoved, we probably could shut that down, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, anything?
Yes. In addition to the chlorination flushing process, I remember early on you also talked about raising the temperature in the hot water heaters, because above a certain temperature, what is it, 136 degrees or something like that?
Yeah, 135 is what the rule said at now.
135, because the bacteria cannot survive at that.
Correct.
Right, so you're doing, you have two measures that are in place. One of the things that, okay, one of the things that I think, that, just based upon the confusion that's already out here, I think that we have to more aggressively communicate, 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 communicate. And I think we also need to simplify. I'm wondering if it's possible to put together a single FAQ sheet, like drinking water, is that at risk? No, because it's cold water that runs through, and this is a hot water, you know, some simple checklist FAQs that address the questions that came up tonight, and making sure that that's not only at the website, but going home on time, and that updates go home on time. I think that, because what I'm hearing is issues with communication, consistency, and thoroughness. So I don't know, you know, if we could better support in that regard. That sounds like one of the issues. That's it for me.
Mr. Siggi, if you could state about the bubble, I guess Mr. Calavano or none of you guys can...
The bubble, yes.
Give us an update on that.
Well, I can tell you about the bubble, we signed contracts on August 27th. Shop drawings were submitted for review on September 14th, and shop drawings were returned on 9/21. There were some issues with the electrical that our contractor had to, or our architect actually had to respond to. I was told that they already responded, now we're just waiting for final permits, but at the same time, the bubble's being manufactured, so it's not like we're waiting for the final permit to have the bubble manufactured. That's being manufactured as we speak. As soon as the permits are issued, then the contracts will get on site and start doing the demo work and start doing what they need to do.
Okay. My concern about that is that we're looking at a November or December finish date now. The bubble's been down since February. Okay, first, it was going to be finished in August, then we pushed it to September, now we just blew past October, and now we're into December. So that affects the track team, the football team, the daily gym classes that are in there, and any student who wants to use or make use of the...
Soccer teams, everybody.
Because then the trickle-down effect is that the soccer team is squished into one...
Three teams in one...
One locker room. The gym classes are, for the warm weather, they're outside, so that's, okay, that's soon going to change, right? That's going to be an issue, and then we have expensive equipment that we invested a lot of money in, in trailers. So though, you know, I registered my objections and my anger with this, with the builder, the contractor, and, you know, this process is beyond what I, the length of, I thought it should have been, you know, never mind, like I said, the gym classes are, they use that facility, you know, every day, they're being put out. Forget the sports for now, I don't want people to think I won't cite it on the sports, it affects the student body. And any student, any child in the high school has access to this, so we're impeding that as well. So, you know, I spoke to Mr. Calavano, and I spoke to Mr. Rutske, in the beginning of the week, that, you know, I want to stay on top of this, I want to make sure that now we don't lose sight of the December date, because then December pushes into the cold weather and the snow, and here we are come April, and we still have no bubble, and, you know, it's a year later, and, you know, they built the Empire State Building in 1930 in one year, here we are, the bubble, it's, you know, it's taken us 10 months or anywhere, we're still... So I don't know if my colleagues have any comments on the bubble itself, but it's pretty frustrating.
I share your frustration about the bubble, but I just want to add on one comment about the Legionnaires' in the water. Mr. Calavano, at the last meeting, we talked about making water available for all students, and a parent came up here tonight and said that her student, her child can't take water from one classroom to the next. So I don't know what's happening there.
I'll have to talk to the superintendent about that.
Thank you, yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Siggi, thank you. Mr. Giacoli, can you speak a little bit to Mr. Volzser and Ms. Benn's questions surrounding the Oprah request, if the superintendent has jurisdiction or authority over the record custodian, and some of those questions?
The superintendent does not have authority. Under the law, under the Open Public Records Act, each public entity has to designate a custodian of records. The custodian of records is responsible for collecting the records, reviewing them, properly redacting them, and then releasing them, public records, and making the decision of whether something is public or not public. Individual employees, even the superintendent does not, do not have the right to override the records custodian's authority. That's a statutory authority conferred upon the records custodian in the Open Public Records Act.
Thank you. Can you speak a little bit about the, a little bit about the Oprah Act, the open records as far as public information and...
Yeah, sure. So the Open Public Records Act is an act that gives the public the right to have access to public records. There's a large body of case law, executive orders, court decisions that define what is a public record and what is not. There are items that are not deemed public records, which can be redacted or not disclosed. For example, student records, they're a public record, but they're not available to the public because of the confidentiality provisions. There are records that deal with personnel. They're a record of the public body, but again, they're not disclosable, attorney-client privilege, and there's a, there's a series of decisions that deal with all those items as well as executive orders and regulations that address what's disclosable, what's not. And ultimately, the records custodian is charged with making those judgment calls and producing the records, and if people disagree, and there's hundreds of Oprah cases out there, if people disagree with the records custodian's determination, there is an entity in New Jersey called the Government Records Council, and people can bring their issue to the Government Records Council, which are the experts that are charged with reviewing it, and if they determine the records custodian should have turned it over, they order it turned over. And sometimes they'll say, "No, the records custodian was correct." And so there is an avenue for people to seek redress if they're not satisfied with the records custodian. But the answer to the ultimate question is, it's John Calavano's job to make that call, statutorily.
Mr. Giacoli, is there any penalties surrounding if the entity or agency does not provide those, or if the custodian of record does not provide those?
Yes, under, there's some case law that the custodian of records for willful violations can be fined, and it's, you know, first fine is $1,000, and it steps up. So there is a fine that can be imposed on the records custodian. That's why it's ultimately his or her, whoever's in that role, statutory duty to do it, and that's why the fine is directed to the records custodian. So that's the answer to the question.
Thomas, from the Board on the particular items? Mr. Oppert? Nope. Ms. Morikai?
No, I have none.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
No.
Mr. Robertson?
Um, let's see. First, want to thank Ms. Coming, Ms. Coming for spearheading the anti-bullying effort and really injecting a lot of energy into that and helping to move us together as a town and a district. Really appreciate that. And as for Ms. Duarte, the bus situation, I apologize that you received an email response that had nothing to do with the bus you're inquiring about, and the idea that kids are sitting on a bus to avoid being unsupervised inside, they're, you know, it's not proper supervision or situation outside, and that is more time, that would be great if they could sleep, produce something productive. That's something that we need to look into and have the administration need to get a proper answer. So we will follow up on that, I promise.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes?
We're actually looking into that. We had a meeting Monday with our staff and Hunterdon County Ed Services Commission. We're tracking times, coming in and leaving at the end of the day. We're giving it this week, and if we have to make adjustments, we'll make the adjustments.
Okay. And communicate to the parents, if an adjustment can't be made, why? If an adjustment is made, what that adjustment is.
Right.
Because the other theme I'm hearing tonight is communication, communication, communication. Where was that? Hold on a second. It's come up before, I'm glad that, Ms. Merklinger mentioned that Ms. DeMendez did a great presentation on E N L and G N T, and I'm still hearing both from parents, from social media, and then tonight, it's been brought up again in regard to G N T. It sounds as if, and if you'd like to address this, that we need, it would be good to have a follow-up forum or some feedback sessions and Q and A sessions on that, as well as continuing the public information session. So I don't know what the thoughts are on that, but more communication on that and exchange is necessary. Okay. That's about it for me. Thank you.
Before we close, you know, I want to hear from the students, if they have any comments on anything that you guys heard tonight, that, from your perspective.
I particularly, I agree with the, with the comment about the bubble, like I personally am a swimmer, and we need the bubble to train for our swim season, and I know students that were proposing, I know our architecture student programs are proposing, I heard about that, like it was happening starting from June, and it's still not up. This is also affecting our gym classes as well, as someone mentioned. And as for the bus issue, like I myself have to, I had to stop using the bus, I had to start getting dropped off to school, because my buses would come at 6:35, bring me to school 6:55, I couldn't get off till 7:10, and it would be an hour and a half in my morning, a half an hour in my morning that I could be using, for example, sleeping, that, and then it would affect me personally for the rest of the day. So I really, you know, I urge you to look forward and to look more into that, and to revise the bus routes, bus scheduling for more efficient bus scheduling as well. Gifted and Talented Program, I heard a lot about that. I myself was in the program back when it was called the Haptitude Program, and I agree that testing kind of defeats the purpose of the program. We didn't have much testing for the, I know, in order to get into it, we took, they based it off our Terranova score in the second grade, but in this program itself, to be, like, I think we had maybe like one test a semester, but mostly it was more about learning, more about getting out of the rigid classroom environment, and to focus more on the learning aspect of school. And so I agree that, you know, rigid testing, being kicked out for failing a test, for me, it feels like it defeats the purpose, and, you know, it looks very different than when I was there. Those are the things that still stood out to me.
I also think concerning the Gifted and Talented Program, I know students, a lot of them struggle with testing anxiety, so, like, if they know a test is coming up, then they stress about that, and then it impacts their scores negatively. So again, with the same idea as Cecino was saying, if something, like, less stress on testing and more stress on how they perform in class, and what, how they demonstrate that in class.
You have any more comments? Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Yes. Okay, so if I can ask Ms. DeMendez, for maybe the next meeting, if we can put together something for the G N T and that program, maybe an update, or maybe the presentation that you shared last night with the Council of PTAs, maybe you can add our next board meeting, which is in two weeks, if you can have that, is that for us?
Okay. Could we give our student, our new student representatives a hand? I mean, they're sacrificing time, they have heavy force loads, and you really made a contribution to them.
Yes. Yes, your input tonight was valuable, so thank you very much.
Okay, our next board meeting will be held on October the 8th, 8:00 p.m. right here in West Orange High School. So I need a motion now to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned.
All right.[1788.76]